The regularly scheduled city council meeting. Can everybody please stand for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Jennifer, will you call the roll, please?
Mitchell?
Here.
Coach?
Here.
Allison?
Present.
Sheil?
Here.
Rizzo?
Here.
Villa Lobos?
Present.
Yes.
Present.
All seven members of council are here. We have a forum.
Mayor Proton?
Yes, council member Sheil.
I would like to, first of all, have a moment of silence in, first of all, support of Officer Justin Putman, and then also for our own parks family, for Ronnie Asparza, and then also to just wish Officer Franco Stewart and Officer Justin Mueller speedy and from recovery.
That's a great idea. We have a moment of silence. Thank you. Does anybody else, before we start, have anything they would like to add to what council member Sheil had to say?
Just, as we, as we think about the officers, we think about the families and the connection to all of us personally, and many blessings of peace and healing as we move forward. I would like to thank the support that was provided to them by both the, by the county and by the city of Kyle and in the city of San Marcos time in need. They stood and stepped in place where it was needed, and it just goes to show our community is united in many different things, but also shows the work that goes on behind the scenes, too, is that that just doesn't happen by itself. It happens over a period of time with developing good relationships within each other as a community. And we'll continue to bless the families that are involved. Prayers to all of the healthcare workers that, with clarity and the guidance to do their jobs and the best care as they possibly can, both for their physical bodies and also their mental, their mental bodies as well, and everybody that's attached to them. This is going to be, there'll be a period of recovery that's going to need a lot of assistance and support. And I hope, and I know that we, as a council and we as a community here in the city of Kyle, stand united to support them and to support their families as they need us and as they continue to need us. Thank you very much for that opportunity.
Thank you, council member Villa Lobos.
I just, council member Robert Rizzo, I just wanted to recognize all the departments that, when the call came out that night, how we all mobilized, all the cities, all the different departments came out and showed their full support. It's great to see that Buta, Kyle, San Marcos, New Braunfels, all working together and coming to the raid at that time, but I just, I'm going to tell you right now that my heart goes out to, to all the families involved, the officers. You know, the show of support that happened city by city, bridge by bridge was just overwhelming. And I'll tell you, I know everybody felt it when, when, when the officer passed by, and it was really hard. You know, we all teared up, we all felt, but it just reminds us that, you know, these officers, you know, that serve us, you know, risk everything for us, and sometimes we forget to thank them. You know, I know sometimes a little too late, but let's always remember to thank those officers that are on the front lines, you know, taking care of all our communities.
Thank you, council member Rizzo. All right, if no one else has anything to say, I'll go ahead and move on to approval of the minutes. We have a lengthy list of minutes.
Mayor Proton, I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes from November 19th for a special meeting, November 19th for a council meeting, December 3rd our special meeting, December 3rd our council meeting, December 16th our special meeting, December 16th our workshop meeting, December 17th a special meeting, and December 17th our council meeting.
Is that good?
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Citizens comments, period. Matt or Samantha, do we have anybody on the line for citizen comments?
Yes, we do have one caller for citizen comments, and I will bring them in now.
Good evening, council members. Today is a very momentous day with everything that is going on with our country, but today is also a very important day, the San Jacinto Day, the day in Texas history that we need to remember and honor. I would like to discuss the stagecoach tree. It would be a wonderful opportunity for us to dedicate that tree to the survivors of this virus. Maybe perhaps make it a pocket park. So many men and women have given up time with their families, doctors, nurses. I would like to see something other than the removal, the cutting down of one of Kyle's oldest residents. It is a part of our community's history, and I think we should keep that tree and dedicate it to everything that's been going on with this virus. I just would like to see something other than removal of it. I did read about David Vaughn, moderate risk of survival. I would like a clearer definition of that, moderate risk of survival. Old growth trees clear out a lot of carbon. You can't replace a hundred and fifty plus year old tree, even if we did go out and plant a bunch of new trees. And it makes me sad to see how on top of house on top of house. I've been here for thirty years, and that's the reason I moved to Kyle. There was, it was wide open spaces. I just wish we would be a little more respectful of our environment. We have a beautiful place to live, and it just, it hurts to see so much happening so quickly in our little community. I wish you would just reconsider cutting that tree down and maybe think about turning it into a pocket park or a wild space where people can go and just have a picnic, enjoy being there. It's a beautiful little area, and I appreciate your time and letting me speak. My concerns are, with all the growth, yes, more trees will be cut down, and I just, I hate to see that happen to our communities. And thank you again, and I appreciate you guys listening to me and having this moment to speak to all of you.
I appreciate you calling in. Could you just state your name for the record before you, before you hang up?
Yes, I'm sorry, Nanette Lucas.
Thank you, Nanette. Is that our only call?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, we'll go ahead and close citizens' comments. Citizens' comments are now closed. Item number ten, we have a Hayes Caldwell Women's Center letter on Child Abuse and Sexual Assault Prevention and Awareness Month, Mayor Travis Mitchell's item.
Thank you. This is a proclamation on child abuse and sexual assault prevention and awareness month. We normally do this every single year, but it was really on my heart extra amounts for this particular season that we are in, and I actually wanted to invite Brandon Pendleton to come on and say a few words before we read the proclamation. I believe he's on hold, ready to go.
I'm a part of the meeting, if everyone can hear me.
We can hear you.
Hey, Brandon.
Excellent. Hello. My name is Brandon Pendleton. I'm a forensic interviewer and a family advocate at the Hayes Caldwell Women's Center in Roxanne House, which is our children's advocacy center. With me today is my colleague Kiara Nicholson. Say hi, Kiara. Are you there?
Hi, I'm here.
Kiara is our primary prevention coordinator and spends a lot of time in the Kyle community and schools under normal circumstances. Mayor Mitchell, you were right. Usually we do a large proclamation, and we come to the city council meeting. I've been to many of those, and we have a nice fancy piece of paper that we present. And we're not doing that paper, obviously. During this uncertain time for all of us, we'd really just like to share some thoughts. First and foremost, I want to echo the sentiments of council members Sheil, Villa Lobos, and Rizzo. The incident that took place over the weekend involving the death of Officer Putnam and the woundings of Officers Mueller and Stewart, that weighs heavy on us at HCWC. It's, it's hard. These are our partners out there. We know that that domestic violence calls are the most dangerous for anyone in law enforcement. They're among the most dangerous, at least. And these are our partners out there who are helping us to fight this scourge. So that's something I want to thank you for acknowledging that earlier today, earlier during the meeting. We also just want to take some time. A big part of what we do at HCWC is just acknowledge hurt and pain and kind of let it be what it is, and just understand that this, we're all kind of going through some hurt and some pain and some grieving, really, is what it is. But just rest assured that HCWC is there for the community, and our services are available for anyone who needs them. All right, our services will look a little bit different right now, but they're there, and we're not turning anyone away. We'd like to thank you for just giving us the time here today, Kiara and myself, Councilman Villa Lobos, and I think Rizzo expressed as well, just when you're talking about the first responders over the weekend and how, you know, Kyle was there. Other members of law enforcement from around the community were there, and that's because we are a community. And that's a big theme for us right now, is how we're all in a community, and we all have to work together to both get through this and to further the mission that we've had for forty years, which is to end violence and abuse in our community. So we want to recognize the partnerships that we have with, of course, the city of Kyle, Kyle Police Department, Hayes County Sheriff's Office, Texas State University, San Marcos PD, Buta PD, you know, Hayes County Child Protective Services, CASA, just everyone who's in our community, the Greater San Marcos Youth Council, CTMC, a big part of our community, Seton Ascension Hayes is a partner we work with as well. We just really want to say thank you for the work that you do specifically and for continuing to be a partner with us. You know, it takes so much more than one organization to, to end and fight back against abuse and violence in the community. My colleague Kiara will take from here.
So to add to what Brandon was already saying, we just wanted to read some statistics for the awareness months that we're acknowledging, because we know that people want to know how many people have been served in our communities, though we know that more people are experiencing these types of abuse in their life than the statistics show. But in two thousand eighteen, HCW, there were four hundred and fifty-five confirmed child abuse cases in Hayes County, and last year, three hundred and ninety-seven victims of child abuse received services at Roxanne's House, which is HCWC's Child Advocacy Center here in Hayes County. And then along with those statistics, last year HCWC also served two hundred and thirty victims of sexual assault in both Hayes and Caldwell Counties. And something that Brandon already highlighted and mentioned was that our, as an agency and as a community, we're all allied together to do the work of trying to end these forms of abuse in our community. And we know that during this time of crisis, people are staying home as a ways of keeping themselves safe and as a way of keeping others in the community safe, but we also know that home is not always a safe place for everyone. And that for many members of our community, staying home also comes with the risk of escalated violence, and that risk is even furthered by many people losing their jobs or losing access to resources that they usually or typically had access to, or they're losing childcare needs. But as Brandon mentioned before, we just want to let the know, the community know that we're still here, all of our emergency services, whether that's shelter, our twenty-four hour hospital response, emergency child forensic interviews like Ryan, or that Brandon is doing, crisis calls, emergency protective orders, all of those are still available for community members at this time. And we just want to continue to thank city council members, the members of the community out in Kyle, that we wouldn't be able to do the work that we do without the support of the community. So thank you for doing this still.
Thank you, Brandon. So, so, Mayor.
Yeah, I was going to just say, thank, thank you both very much for coming on and discussing. Everything that's going on right now is, is pretty difficult for us all to handle, and I can see the toll that it is taking on you, and just want to encourage you to hang in there, and that we consider you to be just a vital, vital resource in the community right now, more than ever. So thank you for coming on and just sharing. And Mayor Proton, it wasn't an actual proclamation, which is normally what we do. It was just a fantastic letter that, that the center sent out, and we will, we'll just forward it to council, if that's okay, because they, they completely summarized everything that was in there and expounded upon it.
Yes, thank you both, Brandon and Kiara. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor, for helping bring this forward, and we will appreciate it if staff forwards that email on to us with the, the letter. When I move on to item number eleven, the CIP Road Projects.
Good evening, Mayor. Engineer.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Going to share a screen with you. Going to try to share my screen with you. Wonder if I can get Matt or, it's not, my screen's not sharing. I wonder if I can get Matt or Jerry to share the slides that we had prepared.
There we go.
Thank you. Let me start off with Lehman Road. We still haven't gotten the latest pay estimates, so we're still fifty-eight percent complete. The bridge is pretty much completed at this point, ninety-five percent complete. If you've been by the area, you've noticed that they've really got everything from Hyver back to almost to Button, in some form of manner, construction. But we're still shooting for the August twenty-twenty date, and just to let you know, we will be closing Lehman from Hyver to Button next week. The intent is to try to completely build this section before school starts. So we want to take advantage of the weather and fact that school is out at this point in time. On the next slide, Burleson Street, based on our pay estimates, we're still showing seventy-four percent complete. Section from Center, other uses of local traffic company with workers in the area. As I mentioned before, we have some pavement distresses there in the section from Lockhart to Live Oak. Encounters of groundwater. We have plans to put some French drains on the west side of the street. That means we'll have to get back into some of the areas that have already been finished. We haven't come up with the detail as to how much that's going to cost and what that's going to take. We're still trying to wrap up the limits of the French drain that we need to install. We also are going to have to take some sections of road that have already been put in, so we're trying to figure out what's the best and fastest way to get that done and get those sections repaired. Martha Rodriguez, I will try to get back to council with our final idea of what we're going to do with that section as soon as I visit with the contractor and the engineer that are working on that project.
Council member Villa Lobos, when you're talking about that particular road, are you addressing, I guess it's, you see certain parts with the degradation where we just put down blacktop? Is that what you're talking about? Is the moisture creating that degradation into the blacktop on the road? Meaning it's already forming potholes in certain areas. We just laid that down?
That is correct. We took tests, we took course through the area, and the moisture, when we placed the material down, it was meeting the requirements for the density as you, as related to moisture. So we had the proper moisture in there, but as time has gone on, that moisture's in the, that underground area's just been saturating that area, so it's been soaking up, that basin's been soaking up that moisture. So we're going to try to come up with a solution that would address that.
Thank you.
Burleson north of the roundabout is open to local traffic only. Utilities north of roundabouts, ninety-five percent complete. Wanted to let council know this estimated substantial completion date of June twenty-twenty. We were really trying to make that date. And again, at our next council meeting, I'll bring you more details, but we've had issues with Unit Pacific on getting our permits to do the bore for the water line and the railroad tracks. That's delaying us. We have the issue with the, with the French drains that we need to put in. There's the pavement repairs and things like that. So we're adding additional work to the contract, and it's going to take a little bit longer. So hopefully we have a better date that we can get back to you on that and let you know what our schedule is and give you the critical path that we're going to have to go through to get this project wrapped up. Next one. Just to talk about the consent agenda items, thirteen and fourteen are two contracts. We have RailPros, their observation, they provided observation and flagging. As we began to bore underneath the railroad tracks, they notified us that Unit Pacific requires that once we're in a certain zone underneath that railroad crossing that we can't stop work, we have to continue work. When we estimated the cost for this project, we did not anticipate having to do a continual bore. The intent was to bore as much as they could today, come back the next day and finish it up. But when we were advised, we could not stop. That messed up our estimates for that project. So these two items are additions or amendments to the RailPros contracts that we have. Sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen are the eminent domain ordinances that we need to, that need, allows us to move forward with the acquiring those properties on the south side wastewater project. This is Alexander property. I think when council member asked about the property, the area property that we're talking about, the three tracks add up to about forty acres, and we're going to be taking about, not even two acres of it for the water easement that we require and the wastewater line that we need to have an easement for. At this point in time, we're forty-seven percent complete, and we still have one crew at the station and second crew's working gradually on their power ports. On the last project, the consent item mentioned at fifteen, we've put out an RQ to select a contract manager, contract inspector for the wastewater treatment plant. The intent is to have an experienced set of eyes on that project that does, has inspected plants before. This would include water lines, include electrical, would include concrete, steel, excavation, everything, paving, everything that needs to be done on that project. So this resolution authorizes us to move forward to repair a contract with the Blacken Beach to do the contract management and contract inspection for us. The notice received will be on May twenty-fifth. Contractor is already out on site. You can tell with the pictures. They are building a road that's going to bring them in off of Hyden Ridge to build the treatment plant. And that should be it.
Leon?
Yes, ma'am.
Now, when we were told in Water Leaf that the contractors would not be bringing any heavy equipment into the neighborhood, and they would access it from Hyden Ridge, you know. However, you know, we have been seeing some large equipment on New Bridge, and so we're wondering if that is going to be stopping soon or if we are going to continue to see large equipment trucks coming through on New Bridge.
The intent is to have them come off of Hyden Ridge. I imagine they were trucking the equipment in so they could start working on it, but I'll visit with the project manager and ask them to see if they can't start coming in off of Hyden Ridge and try to minimize the number of trips through the neighborhood.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, if there are no more questions for Leon, we will go ahead and move on to the consent agenda.
Hey, council member Coach, I have, I have something more that I need to address. I know that we, I know that we have some of our main contractors that we do work with doing a lot of different things throughout the city, and there's a lot of developments going on throughout the city. So, you know, I understand the, the, you know, I guess the organic kind of environment and people and switching hands. You have subcontractors as well. And, you know, earlier today, I know there was an issue with constructing and digging and repairing a gas line. And I know with respect to that, Leon, and then maybe, and I'd already spoken with Mr. Earp, who's, who got down to, you know, really understanding, you know, how this was all done, but I just, probably going to be bringing forward a plan to, or a strategy to create some better communication with our citizens, especially when, when some of those projects encroach onto private property, at least following some, some guidelines for that so that we can ensure that we're at least making our best effort to communicate to them that we're going to have large equipment, digging on personal property, and then therefore they can be prepared for it. And I know that sometimes it's hard because it exchanges hands from, you know, our, our contractor, the subcontractor, and maybe that, that gets lost in some places. But it's a concern for me in that, you know, in this one area, it's happened a couple of times now, and it creates great concern for, for the property owner in that when we approach on there, we actually start doing construction, and we're really changing the landscape, what that property looks like. And I know we probably have the authority to be there, maybe we do, but I think as a courtesy, we need to do a better job at communicating, you know, when we're fixing to do this, at least give them some lead time. So then therefore we can say, and give them an opportunity to ask questions before it happens. And if, and if it doesn't, then, then obviously we've done our due diligence. And so one of the things I know that we're risk, that I have heard is that maybe to the point where we're actually putting in door hangers or some type of, of literature within the radius of where these projects are happening to residents, so they can be feel included, they can understand it's coming. And, I mean, I'll, I'll take any feedback on that, but I'm going to be working on a, on a strategy for that, so we can be better in communication with our citizens. And, and this is probably going to help resolve some issues that we're having. I'm just trying to make your job a little easier, and we can push this on to some of the contractors so that there could be good stewards of the work that they're getting from the city and that they're communicating those out to the citizens, and that they're giving the heads up when, especially when their personal property is, is, is going to be affected. So in this particular case, obviously, it's, it's, it's the property off of Burleson where Spring, Spring Branch runs into, and that's the Royal Vegas property. So I just want to just point that out again and, and, and really create some, some really good synergy with just point that out again and, and, and really create some, some really good synergy with communication. And I know I'll be continuing to move forward with that. Hopefully we could come up with a strategy that comes into our plans and working with contractors onto our, into our areas. Anyways, any feedback would be great. If not, then we'll move on and we'll bring it again and then maybe the next meeting and then we'll start working with a plan to make sure that we get that communication piece done. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have anything they would like to add or comment on? All right. Thank you, councilmember Villalobos. Thank you, Leon. Move forward to item, to the consent agenda. Items twelve through nineteen. Does anybody have any items that they would like to pull from the consent agenda?
Mayor Protem?
Yes.
I would like to actually make a motion to approve consent agenda items twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen and nineteen. And twenty, sorry.
A second then.
I think it's just up to nineteen.
I think there's twenty on the consent.
On the agenda, there's twenty.
There's twenty.
Okay. I might have an old agenda here in front of me.
Number twenty is a resolution by the city of Kyle suspending May four twenty twenty effective date proposed by Centerpoint Energy Corp.
Okay. Is item twenty-one, the authorization of a drum for a part skid steer?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. All right. So items nineteen or twelve through twenty, and I believe councilmember Villalobos seconded that.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right, motion carries seven to zero. We will now move on to item twenty-one. Authorization of an expenditure of a drum for a part skid steer. Is Mariana online?
I am. Good evening, mayor and council. Mariana Espinoza, Parks and Recreation Department Director for the record. I'd like to request the approval of a purchase for, to order, a purchase order for a whole cat, an amount not to exceed thirty-three thousand eight forty-four twenty-six for the purchase of a drum mulcher attachment for a skid steer that the parks maintenance and city will reuse on city parks and in city trails. Myself along with the two-person trails crew and our parks maintenance manager did obtain quotes and review them and decided this would be the best piece of equipment to, for our needs that we need to do, that we need for our trails as far as the trail maintenance and trail clearing. And funding to purchase this would be available from cost savings from the final quotes for the installation of the security systems.
Thank you, Mariana. I, I just want to say that I've had a couple of opportunities to go up and down our new trail system over there on the east side of town. I forgot how many miles it is, but it leads all the way to Lake Kyle. And I want to thank you and your crew. It's an amazing amount of work that you guys have done. Those trails are really fun and it is an absolute great way to experience Kyle. And I would suggest if anybody gets the chance to please go and enjoy yourself and walk that Plum Creek Trail. It is a great experience.
Thank you. Let him know.
All right. Well, with that said, do we have anybody else who would like to?
Yeah, councilmember Rizzo. I just, first of all, I just want to say yeah, amazing what they, what two people have done on our trails along with you, Mariana. It's great to see the amount of work they've done. They've really, really worked hard. I can tell you right now that they are shorts and tools. I was, I'm a big believer of the right tool for the right job. And I'm, I know that they're experiencing some difficulties right now. Having a lot of piles of brush which can cause a danger later if we leave it there too long, a fire hazard. So I'm, I'm glad that we're looking at this investment. I think it's a great investment. I, I think it'd be a win-win for our trail system, especially right now that we're battling COVID nineteen and giving people a place to walk and, and try to just unwind and not have to think about what's going on day to day and just give them a place of solace is kind of what I'm thinking, but it, yeah, I think this is a much needed piece of equipment. I know Hope Cat is a great company. And I think it'd be a great buy for us and I think it really helps out the two people we have on staff right now.
I'll entertain a motion.
I got one, one thing, Protem, this Tobias.
Go ahead, sir.
Just wanted to say, Mrs. Espinoza, your team is doing a remarkable job. I had the privilege of helping out at the Greater River cleanup they did back in February. And had a chance to talk with your crew and see the remarkable work they're doing. If y'all, I'm going to reflect on Mayor Protem and Rizzo, if you haven't been out there, that place is amazing. It's, it's very peaceful. It's a nice walk. I can see some great potential out there, especially when the creek was flowing. It had just rained a couple of days before. And it, and I just envisioned what kind of a trail system we would have and not, not trying to compare to the hike and bike trail when I used to live out in Austin, but I just looked at the promise of what it could be for our citizens. And I just wanted to thank you and your team for doing a remarkable job. I know they're out there cutting and moving all that stuff by hand. I know it's taken a long hours, but for the two little gentlemen out there working and the land that they cleared, it's remarkable. It's amazing. And again, by speaking with them, I can see their enthusiasm of being out there and enjoying what they could give back to the community. So I wanted to say thank you on that end and and to your crew and I really support what we're doing here on this because they really need this equipment very bad.
I'll be sure to let the trails team and the park maintenance team know. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Mayor Protem, I'd like to motion to approve the authorization of the purchase of order of the whole cat in the amount not to exceed thirty-three thousand eight hundred and forty-four dollars and twenty-six cents for the purchase of a drum mulcher attachment for skid steer for the use by the parks maintenance crews on city parks and trails.
Second, I'm so excited about that one. I had to second that one myself. Motion.
Yes, Mayor Protem?
Yes, councilmember.
I also want to, you know, reiterate what everybody said. I remember the day that myself, Scott, Carrie, you know, Trail, other parts department personnel went out and we started trail blazing. We needed machetes. We were climbing over things just to, you know, get to it. And so it is an absolutely beautiful trail. And thank you for your staff, for your support, and thank you so much because it is a beautiful trail to walk. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I also want to, before we vote, thank councilmembers Tobias and councilmember Ellison with the river cleanup. They went out there earlier this year and if you get a chance to talk to councilmember Ellison, he will tell you some very entertaining stories about some harrowing situations of having to cross the creek to pull trash out of there and make it look nice for visitors. But we definitely have a hardworking crew out there. So appreciate when, and when, especially when those members of the crew are council members, it's, it's definitely something special. So thank you all for that so much.
Mayor Protem, also Kathy Riker for heading that as well. She, she puts in a lot of time and effort to get that going every year. So also a shout out to her.
Thank you for that. Absolutely. There's a lot of great people who are involved in that.
A lot of volunteers from the community who are out there too. And it was a great, great Saturday morning. Good to see everybody out there.
Yes, it was.
Nelson's very brave.
All right. With all that being said, I'll go ahead and ask for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes seven to zero. All right. You all have to forgive me. I cannot find the latest updated agenda, so I might say the number wrong, but we are on item number twenty-two. Is that an amendment to an ordinance for regulating city roads, right of ways and easements?
No, it's not. It's the authorize the hiring of two new seasonal positions to be dedicated for the maintenance of city park trails in parks and recreation department.
Before we move on, Jennifer, would you please email me the, the latest agenda? I must have an old email that I'm, and I cannot find.
In your inbox.
I think Matt just sent it to me. Perfect. Thank you for your patience. Okay, Mariana, this is your item.
Yes, sir. Mayor Protem, this is Mariana again. And as we're speaking of trails and the increased responsibility, we also have an increased need for additional staff, just in park maintenance in general and specifically in the trails. So we are coming to request approval for the hiring of two new seasonal park maintenance positions that would be dedicated to the trails and parks. And funding for these two positions would be provided from the approved budget for seasonal and temporary staff in the Parks and Recreation Department's line item.
Any comments?
Yeah, councilmember Rizzo here. Mariana, what would their job duties be if they're seasonal?
Specifically assisting with the rest of the trail, getting the trail built. By the end of this week, weather pending into next week, we'll also have another park joining. Button Creek Playground will be complete. And we'll start on Masonwood Park, helping out. We're one short as you, as councilmember Sheil mentioned earlier. One of our park employees did pass away about a week and a half ago. So kind of just helping out at City's Park and at Steeplechase, more of a Rover Road, and then Ash Pavilion is going to begin in a week and a half. So we'll be needing help at Greg Clark Park as well.
So I know we've got an open position right now due to a loss. Are we going to fill that position? Or are we just going to work on the two seasonals for now?
Yeah, that position is currently posted as an internal promotional opportunity.
Okay. Well, I, I just want to reiterate what I said earlier. It's amazing to see two people working on trail system and the amount of work they've done. I mean, these are two very hardworking individuals. But I, I can tell you right now that the need for help is, is great. I usually, when I see crews clearing land like that, I usually see a crew of four. You know, you have one guy cutting, you have one guy pulling back brush, you have another guy loading. You have another guy, you know, fixing the load. So it's really four people. So it's, it's amazing that two people have done the amount of work that they've done. But I'll tell you what, that I think we might be taking a little bit of advantage of them. So I'd love to see them get some help. So thank you for bringing this item forward.
Move to approve, mayor.
Okay, I have a motion by the mayor. Second by councilmember Sheil. It looks like Mr. Councilmember Villalobos had something to say.
Nah, just, I just second. As soon as he finishes, I said second. You got, you got two people and all the work they've done. Can you imagine what she's going to be able to squeeze out of two part timers? I'm just, she she is efficient. She knows how to manage those people and they love their job. So that's what we need their support. Let's, let's keep it going.
Sounds great. All right. Motion on the floor, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion passes seven to zero. Thank you, Mariana.
Thank you.
Move on to item twenty-three, an amendment to an ordinance, the city of Kyle, Texas regulating city roads, right of ways, easements and utility infrastructure for such use, therefore pipelines. Do we have Barbara here with us?
You don't, but I can address this. This is Paige Sines for the record. This is an amendment to the city's pipeline ordinance to make clear that any right of way agreements that you enter under this agreement are for the purpose of permitting and permitting a single pipeline in the right of way. And that, that number doesn't increase without the council approval.
Good.
Comments?
You know, if we don't have any much discussion beforehand, I'd like just to go ahead and get a motion in place and just motion to approve. And then we can have discussion if we need to afterwards, but I like the motion to approve that.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right. If there's no discussion, go ahead and take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes seven to zero.
Mayor Protem?
Councilmember.
This would be unanimous vote for a first reading. Can this be final reading?
Paige, can we make it? Can we approve for a final reading?
You've got seven here, right?
Yes, we do.
I mean, council, you can, you can do so.
Let's do it.
All right.
Well, it's, it's just great to be on the same page.
Yes.
Always. All right. Item twenty-four. Consider a request for a waiver to allow a fifty-foot right of way for the local residential streets, internal and to the subdivision on Go Fourth. Howard Koontz, this is your item.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and council. My name is Howard Parents. I'm the Community Development Director for the record. I, I trust everybody can hear me.
Perfectly.
Loud and clear, Howard. Great job.
Howard decided to come in for this meeting to the office?
Yeah, it's pretty much the only way I can make it happen. It's just not, it's not going to happen where I live that I can get the data throughput to be able to do voice and video live. So.
Well, you know, we got a pretty great IT department. Maybe we could get Matt to pump something down there for you.
Sure. Okay. So back to the agenda item. This is a request to our subdivision standards in the city code that relate to the required minimums for right of way width. Typically, the city of Kyle's minimum right of way width is sixty feet. That's for our most minor subdivision streets. The applicant has made this application to us to have fifty-foot rights of way rather than sixty-foot rights of way to capitalize on what little developable land there is present in this property. The property is on Go Fourth Road, pretty much due east of the, the high school of Langley High School. It's what we used to refer to as the Schlort property. It has now been transferred and will be developed as an R one-three family detached subdivision with a minor parcel of commercial on the far southwest end. It's crisscrossed by a number of easements, overhead power. There's some underground wet utilities that are located as well as a pretty significant amount of floodplain that bisects the property from the northwest to the southeast. So in an effort to capitalize on the land that they have remaining, they sought instead to be able to build on the more, more common, more typically developed fifty-foot right of way model rather than what Kyle requires, which is sixty. Kyle's right of way is the widest that we found in researching the thirty-five corridor. Kyle's right-of-way is the widest that we found in researching the thirty-five corridor. The next closest would be the City of San Marcos, who has a fifty-three foot requirement. So we've talked with engineering, the Public Works Department, neither of which had any objection to this request. Planning can't find any threat to safety or welfare, so our recommendation to you would be to support the request.
Okay, thank you, Howard. Just so that the rest of the council knows, the applicant for this item is on the line as well. Do we have any comments or questions for Howard or the applicant?
I do.
Go ahead, Tracy.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to ask, Howard, if if you spoke to the police and fire departments and asked their input on this, and what were their thoughts?
I haven't sought any input from the police department. From the fire department, their concern is more about pavement width and the ability to get their apparatus down the paved streets. I believe they have a little bit of lesser interest in the actual right-of-way width. The remainder of the right-of-way that's not paved is generally reserved for utility corridors and sidewalks. Should be able to put a model together where we can still place all those utilities underground and still have the ability for the requisite width of pavement required for the local life safety amendments to the International Residential Code.
Okay, just wanted to confirm that. Thank you.
Councilmember Rizzo?
Yeah, Tracy beat me to the punch on that one. She actually asked a question. I was wondering was about the power department being able to get their truck in there with vehicles on the side, but I didn't know how close the vehicles would be there on that right-of-way, but I, he answered the question, so I'm good with it.
Okay, great. Anyone else?
You said you had the, this is Councilman Tobias. You said you had the resident on the phone or online? Did they want to add anything?
Amanda, do we have the applicant still on the line?
Yes, we do. I'll bring him in now, and Mr. Rawls, please announce your name upon entry. Mr. Rawls?
Sorry, I think I unmuted myself at the same time as you did. There, I have nothing to add, but obviously if there are any questions or concerns, I can answer those. But I think Howard presented everything that we had for that.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Mr. Rawls. If there are no questions, further questions, I will go ahead and entertain a motion.
Mayor Protem, I'd like to make a motion to approve item number twenty-four.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. Thank you, Howard. It went smooth. Appreciate it.
Glad to help. Have a great evening.
Moving on to item number twenty-five. Discussion and possible action for a three-way stop at the intersection of Scott and Allen Streets. Councilmember Rizzo, this is your item.
Yeah, Mayor Protem, the reason I'm bringing this item before council is I, I noticed a need for a stop sign over on, coming off of Allen onto Scott Street. And the reason why is that there's a new house built there on the left about two years ago. And what they did there is that they elevated the, the front yard with some big rocks, and then they built a fence in the back that obstructs the view of traffic coming in from the south side on Scott Street. So if you're turning off the Allen to Scott, you're kind of taking a chance every time you, you turn left there and/or even right, because it's, it's become a hazard, because there's, the house, the fence, everything obstructs the view there. So I noticed this and got with Leon, I got with Harper and with Chief, and met them there one day, and they saw the need for it as well. Looking through our criteria, place on our criteria list for stop signs. Criteria number three was locations where a road user after stopping cannot see conflicting traffic and is not able to negotiate the intersection unless conflicting cross-traffic is also required to stop. And I think that meets that criteria in that area, and I'd love to propose adding two more stop signs, both of them on Scott Street, just to stop people both ways and to give people safety. The other thing is that the library's there, and I'm worried about people crossing the street in that area also. So there's, there's a couple of concerns there, and I think a stop sign would, would just be the safe way to go keeping everyone safe there. And I do, during our last council meeting, we actually had someone take out the fence on the left side, and I don't know if, because somebody drove out, but he did, I don't know if he had to do what I do sometimes when I go through the intersection, is try to, you know, accelerate to get across the street, and maybe he lost control is all I can think of, but I really don't know. But I know that we've had a couple accidents there, and I think this would be a great time to address this before we have a severe accident there.
Councilmember Rizzo?
Yes, ma'am.
Was a warrant study performed?
I'm sorry?
Was a warrant study performed for this intersection?
We actually didn't have the study, but we did, we did meet out there. It was Chief and Harper and Leon, which is usually the protocol for them to come out and, and evaluate the, the intersection, and they were all the same consistency as that something was needed to be done there, and they actually came out and even looked at the positioning of where to put the signs and the signs before the stop sign.
Okay, thank you.
Leon, are you on? Do you have anything that you would like to add? I'd like to hear your perspective on this as well.
Certainly, Mayor Protem. Leon Barber, City Engineer. We did visit this, but actually I went to the site Sunday before and noticed that somebody, actually at high rate speed coming north on Scott Street. At that point, it was pretty obvious to me that that was an issue that we needed to look into and try to resolve. Typically, when you do a warrant study, you look at the, the traffic accidents in there. And we did do the research. There were no traffic accidents in that area. We had to have five within the last year, and obviously we don't have five within the last year. But it didn't meet that guideline. The other guidelines that we use are the number of vehicles going through the intersection. Obviously, we're not, it didn't make, didn't make sense to run or get the traffic counts through that area because it's not the normal traffic that we have through there. But there is the final guideline that we look at where there's an issue with turning left, and that can be considered as an issue. It's the, both, both roadways are residential to some extent, and so there's guidelines that allow the engineer to make a decision based on the existing conditions. It won't meet the traffic counts, it won't meet the number of accidents, but meeting that one guideline allows us to go ahead and move forward with it. It does meet our engineering study requirements.
Scott, I just sent you a picture a little while ago of Allen Street and the house on the left. Could you bring that up, please? Just so the council. I emailed it to you late, sorry.
Mind resetting that to me? I don't think the picture came through.
Okay, let me try and do that real quick.
This is clearly a dated image here.
The house is not there, so definitely. And Chief also, you know, also, I have a question for Chief. He could speak on it a little bit.
Yes, sir, Councilmember Rizzo, thank you. Jeff Barnett, Chief of Police, for the record. We did look at accidents all the way back to 2011. There was only one accident that was recorded in our police records, and for that particular accident, they opted not to complete an accident report and handle it between the property owners. Also, we looked at the line of sight, and we looked at a safety issue for this intersection rather than traffic count and accident count, and we agreed wholeheartedly that this accident or that this location with the new construction, current design, current location of the stop sign was certainly a dangerous area, and that we supported the idea of a three-way stop sign at this location.
Thank you, Chief. Scott, can you go to that bird's eye view picture again?
There you go.
Here's, here's a picture of the wall and the house on your left now that I looked at there before, and that, that's kind of what's keeping everybody from seeing anything coming up on that Scott Street South.
This is Councilman Tobias. I want to echo what Robert's saying on this. I've driven by there many times. My family goes to the library a lot during summer. And right where you see that sidewalk, I have actually seen some kids and families have to literally run across the street just so that way they could beat any of that oncoming traffic on Scott. If we were to propose to do this three-way stop, would we be able to maybe later on add a pedestrian line? Where it could be like a crosswalk, where we can have it visible to where people can walk across that street to where they can continue like back down towards Scott?
We, we actually talked about that as well. Harper's on the line.
Lines or something like that, because there are a lot of kids that do walk to the library. I've always seen them. But again, it's, it's a matter of trying to walk across that street when you've got all those cars that are coming at a high rate sometimes.
We had that concern when we were out there. We noticed it, but Harper, a little bit more about that if Harper's on.
Yes, sir, Mayor, Mayor Council, this is Harper Wilder, Public Works Director. I was just going to say the same thing when I was out there, discussed with Councilmember Rizzo, that the end of the sidewalk there in front of the house he was referred to does not have an ADA ramp to get pedestrians safely across the street to the library back and forth. So what we suggested is if we do put those stop signs there on Scott, that we would install ADA ramps on either side of Scott and make that a cross, a crossing location. Were you, were you all able to hear that?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Harper.
Yes, sir. There also, Mr. Rizzo was right. We suggested an advanced warning just south of that location, that intersection, so that make drivers aware that there's a upcoming intersection stop.
Because I know there's Meyer Street, and then there's a stop sign at Myers and Allen. As you can see, if you make that right, and it'll just go up curve, you'll have another quick stop sign there. But I think that would help people from accelerating at a fast speed after they make that right turn, and also people coming down or coming up from Scott to see that they're coming, approaching a library where we'll eventually have a lot more pedestrian traffic with that new subdivision being built behind it. And also, yeah, there you go. On Allen Street, it would make it safer for those kids or the people to be able to walk across the street if we had something with pedestrian signage and a crosswalk, it'd make it more safe.
Yes, sir.
Kids can ride their bikes.
Yes, sir. There's, if you're on Scott Street, there's no stop sign on Scott itself except for at Opel and then back down on Sledge. So there at that curve, if you're coming up Allen and you approach Scott Street and you need to make a left-hand turn and go south on Scott, your visibility is very limited. Our staff at Public Works goes and checks well, too, that is located at that same intersection every day. My own staff has talked about the dangerousness of that intersection, and so I was an advocate of putting something there myself.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Do you have that little circle at the center of where they intersect on this map? Yeah. I mean, I'm doing this where, where Councilmember Rizzo is going. He knows that, that three-way stops can, can lead to roundabouts in the city of Kyle. So I want to thank you for bringing up the discussion of a possible roundabout as well. I'm just curious what Mr. Sellers, what would we be looking at for a situation for a roundabout if later on we found that to be a need?
Mr. Sellers, if I can, I think we need to talk to Leon, because I'm not sure that you're going to have the room for a roundabout in that, that location.
The land that just on this picture, the top of it is north, is that ours or is that, is that owned by somebody else?
So this is city manager here. This, this parcel here is owned by someone else. We do have a little strip here, but our right-of-way goes to this extent right here to the tree line.
Okay.
Would be a short wheelbase roundabout. Usually, you need a little bit more right-of-way to get the larger trucks, a larger wheelbase roundabout. But a, a traffic circle could also work rather than a roundabout.
Yeah, I was thinking more along the line of a, of a traffic circle than, than a big roundabout, but I would just.
Can you explain that? Explain, explain what a traffic circle is?
So, so a roundabout is a, here, sorry, I'm going to. So a roundabout would be something with a, an apron, a mountable apron, basically for, for vehicles to be able to ride up onto with a large, either planter or center area in the middle. And, you know, it, it forces a much wider radius. A traffic circle is something akin to what you would see like in Plum Creek on Fairway. Just a, a very small planter and maybe a area around it. So consider it more like a just a small obstacle to route traffic rather than a larger traffic calming obstacle, larger flows.
Yeah, I think that would be perfect in that particular area.
Yeah, I, I kind of agree. It'd be great. I'd like to see the stop signs go quicker, because I think there's a need for them right of way. But if, I'm okay with proposing a traffic circle through there, if that's what council wishes to do.
I, I agree. I don't mind the stop signs, but I think, you know, people, they just don't like anything interfering with their traffic flow. So for all the houses down there on Scott, it's just going to be one more stop for them. So if we want to do the stop signs in the interim, I would love to see a proposal just to see what the cost would be for us to possibly look at a, a traffic circle.
Scott or Leon maybe even. If we did a traffic circle, which I am in complete support of, we could still be able to add the pedestrian walkway on that one area, correct?
This is Leon Barber, City Engineer. It would be, we could look into it. It would be, it might be tight in that particular area because we'd have to provide crosswalks, I guess, in all directions in that, if we do the. There's such a thing called a mini roundabout. That might be something we could look at also. It doesn't require much right-of-way. Typical roundabout's going to be around two hundred feet radius is what we need. That may be too much for this particular intersection. We also, we could always look at a smaller version of a roundabout and look at how the traffic patterns would be affected there, but definitely we want to. and go look at the, how the traffic patterns would be affected there. But definitely want to focus on keeping that, uh, uh, sidewalk there and using that as the, uh, way to get across the road.
I guess we just trying to look at to see what's best, um, having these cars come to a complete stop? Or just have the small flow of traffic going through and, and just using that roundabout?
I think for the short time right now, I think the stop signs and finishing up the sidewalk, making it ADA compliant, uh, just for now. Cause I, I think this is something we need to address quickly. I'm just worried that every day we leave it alone, somebody could, uh, potentially get hurt seriously. Uh, you know, usually when I get in that intersection, I usually have to gun it around the corner. And not everybody has that work for all, uh, especially because we've got an, uh, aging community in that area. And I worry about them not being able to accelerate quickly enough, you know, or having the work for all to do that. And I'm just thinking about a serious accident. So I'd like to see, uh, hopefully council, uh, approve this and we do some pretty quickly like, um, and, cause, uh, I just think it's a danger right now. And like you say, the kids do foster that.
Yes, it is a public safety issue.
Okay, do I, uh, do I have a motion for this item?
Mayor Pro Tim, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, install the stop signs and, uh, fix the sidewalks to ADA compliant, uh, at Allen and Scott Street.
Second.
Do we put any language on this? Or should we be placing any language on this to make it interim? So therefore we were guiding out to the, uh, to the other proposals? Or are we gonna just leave it as a, as a permanent?
Mr. Sellers, do you think this is something that you could, uh, uh, bring back Leon as well, uh, maybe, uh, a, a couple of meetings from now? Just to kind of give us an idea of what we're looking at?
Mayor, Mayor Council, I can bring back an ordinance for the next meeting for your review of the.
We'll, we'll bring back, um, a, a schematic for what a, uh, mini roundabout or a traffic circle could look like there.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
I'm okay with that.
Okay, well then I think we can leave the, uh, the motion and the second as is. Any, uh, further discussion on this item?
I just appreciate, uh, Councilmember Rizzo bringing that forward to, to address the safety. I think, uh, those are the things that we should, uh, continue to, you know, to be active and be looking for, making observations. Uh, thank you for getting everybody together to, to make the recommendations and, and fix an issue that's, that's important to all of us. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilmember Viola, for your support. Appreciate it.
Yes, I want to, uh, second that. Thank you as well, uh, uh, Councilmember Rizzo. I, I appreciate your hard work and stuff on that. If we have no further discussion, go ahead and take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero. Moving on to item twenty-six. Uh, first reading of an ordinance for the city of Kyle, Texas, uh, repealing portions of the city ordinances, closing daycare facilities and providing for related matters. Uh, this is Mayor, uh, Mitchell's item.
I yield the Florida page.
Ms. Sines?
This is Paige Sines, City Attorney for the Record. Uh, this item follows the, uh, last set of actions by the city related to opening daycares and setting standards for their operations. You had adopted an ordinance closing them. So the ordinance needs to be repealed so it doesn't conflict with the latest set of orders.
Okay, I will make a motion to repeal, uh, the ordinance in item twenty-six as written. Is that sufficient, Ms. Paige?
Yes.
So I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes seven to zero.
Mayor Pro Tim, once again, this is a first reading, so can we finally pass?
We have seven, a seven oh vote. So, uh, I believe we can. Can I get a confirmation?
You can.
Okay, item is finally passed. Item number twenty-seven. Recommend mayor issue an ordinance to suspend and waive rules related to recreational vehicles in Kyle. Uh, this is Councilmember Tobias's item.
Yes, good evening, council. Uh, I won't spend, uh, too much time on this. Uh, this was brought to my attention last week by a citizen who, uh, was requesting to have, um, one of their, our vehicles in their residence, used as a second residence, uh, due to the fact that he is, uh, an essential worker that he works to Austin. And, um, he was able to, uh, work this out with his HOA, uh, to be able to get a, um, guidelines to where he could be able to have that. And the reason why I had brought this up was because I didn't know if, uh, we were, anybody else in the area was, was having these, um, types of requests. So there's really nothing to go on, on this. And the only thing I would like to just say is if this comes up again, um, figuring that the, some of these businesses possibly could be reopening. And if some of the citizens in the area are deemed essential, that the HOAs, uh, be flexible in these situations, um, to be able to assist these citizens with, uh, any of the requests to have their, uh, any RVs or recreational vehicles used as secondary housing. It's just to be able to allow them to have a, a second housing for isolation they needed to, uh, to keep their family safe. So there's really, I feel there's just no action on it. So I could just, uh, recommend. It was already resolved. This is already resolved. Or in. Anyone?
Okay, the situation's already been resolved?
Yes, sir. There doesn't need to be a, uh, right now at this point to be changing any ordinances.
Okay. Well, I want to thank you, uh, Councilmember Tobias for looking into that and, uh, trying to find a, a solution to, uh, the, uh, citizen's problem on that. Um, if there's no need for us to, to take action on this item, then if there's no further discussion on it, I think we can just move forward. Would that be all right with everyone else?
We're good.
I'm good with that.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Tobias.
Sure.
We will go ahead and move on to the, uh, city manager's report.
Mayor Council, good evening. Uh, really just one quick item for city manager's report. We are still looking for your nominations for the Charter Review Commission. Uh, we had hoped to have that ready to go by tonight, but we're still lacking some names. So if you can give that a little bit more thought and get those into myself or Jennifer in the next, uh, week or so, that would be great. We'll get that commission up and running. And that's all I have.
Okay. You need nominations for, uh, the Charter Review?
Charter Review Commission.
Okay. What would be the best way for us to do that? To email Jennifer?
Yes, please.
Okay. Is there a timeline that you need us to send that in by? Just so council, where?
Yeah, so the, the Charter Review Commission has six months to go through any proposed changes and then bring those forward for a potential vote. Uh, we were hoping to get them up and running now. And, uh, if, if there was anything for the ballot for this November, uh, it would be ready to go. So the sooner we can get that commission up and running, the, the more opportunities we have to get any sort of, uh, questions on that November election if needed.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Sellers. Was there any reason to go back into executive session?
Yes, to get an update from, uh, the pipeline.
Scott, do we need to convene in the executive session again?
Yes, if you can convene for, uh, item number one, the Kinder Morgan Pipeline Litigation.
Okay, Councilmember Shield?
Okay, pursuant to chapter five-five-one Texas Government Code, the city council reserves the right to convene into executive session from time to time as deemed necessary during this meeting. The city council may convene into executive session pursuant to any lawful exception contained in chapter five-five-one of the Texas Government Code, including any or all of the following topics. Pending or contemplated litigation or to seek the advice of the city attorney pursuant to chapter five-five-one dot zero-seven-one, Kinder Morgan Pipeline Litigation.
Matt, please take this into executive session. Action taken in executive session? There'll be no action taken out of executive session?
Mayor Pro Tim, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn executive session.
Second.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, motion passes?
Mayor Pro Tim, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn, um, tonight's, uh, city council meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Me and adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Have a great night.